Good evening and welcome to the West Jordan Planning Commission for February 16, 2016. We do have all seven of us present somewhere. I'm sure we'll be up to full speed here in just a second. First item on our agenda is the minutes from the February 2nd, 2016 meeting. I've been saving those for when we get closer to the actual event there.
I will move to approve the minutes.
Motion by Commissioner Green, second by Commissioner Hanson. Any discussion to the motion? Hearing none, all in favor said aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Two public hearings on our agenda for this evening, both are coming from the city. Starting with the hotel extended stay.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Chair. I'll be brief in my comments regarding both of these projects. There are currently two sites in West Jordan that have active interest in potential development to be a hotel. And so, in that process, we've been working with various brokers and hoteliers. It's come to our attention that our code, as it's currently constructed, is a little out of date. And in order to be consistent with other municipalities along the Wasatch Front and remain competitive, we've proposed this amendment to essentially remove the reference to hotel extended stay and that used in the 2009 city code. And as you'll see here on the slide, you can see what some of the other cities or how some of the cities handle hotel and similar type uses. And it's fairly consistent with a few modifications depending on the city, that you're looking at basically one land use definition or category for this type of use, which is a hotel. And so, in an effort to be more streamlined and consistent with the other cities, we're recommending that the planning commission forward a positive recommendation to the city council to remove hotel extended stay from our current zoning ordinance. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? Hearing none. This was agendaized as a public hearing. For our public hearings, we do allow three minutes per individual. We ask that you come forward to the microphone and give your name and contact information in case city staff needs to follow up with you on any of your comments. And with that, we'll open a public hearing on this item. If there is anybody who would like to speak, I'd invite you to the microphone. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing on that item and bring it back to the commission. Mr. Green?
I'm just gonna say, I think this is a... The more that we can cross out extraneous stuff in the city code, the better off we are. The less exceptions that we have, the better off we are. And when we're talking about hotels now and the difference between a residence in and, you know, when you look at just one, you know, State Bridge Suites, or is that a hotel extended stay? Good luck, because we all stay there. So, I think this is a... I think this is, for lack of a better term, I think this is a no-brainer to clean this up.
Thank you. Any additional comments, questions? Commissioner Skosky?
Well, based on the findings set forth in the staff report and upon evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission forward a positive recommendation to the city council for the proposed text amendments to Title 13 as addressed in the report.
Motion by Commissioner Skosky, second by Commissioner Quinney. Any discussion to the motion? All in favor said aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. And I'm back to you.
Okay, item number three is another public hearing for another text amendment. The proposal is to amend the 2009 city code, Section 13-8-23, more commonly known as the annual cap and grade multifamily development applications. Brief history, this current ordinance, as it is in our... As it is found in our city code, it comes from ordinance 1515. Here are the general parameters, the purpose and intent outlined at the beginning of the ordinance. It essentially sets a ratio of single-family compared to multifamily housing in citywide. And highlighted in red is the actual ratio of 77% single-family residential to 23% multifamily. And during last month's city council retreat, I was able to give the city council an update as we concluded 2015, where we currently sit with those numbers. And extrapolating that data out into the future, how long it would take to balance that out and so forth, and I'm not going to go into that detail right now, but since we do have members of the public here, I do have a copy of that summary that I gave to the city council at the end here of the diocese. If you're interested, you're welcome to take a copy. But we've basically, we've had two years... Two years of history, two years of having this ordinance in play in the city. And the purpose behind it is to create this balance, this balanced community. Since we've had a little bit of time to see how the development community would react and apply these requirements, we've noticed a little bit of trend and possibly a little bit of unintended consequences that we're trying to mitigate with this proposed amendment. First amendment refers to the first portion of 13-8-23. There's a reference in the second paragraph of Part A that says, "The city of West Jordan has adopted a cap and grade procedure specific to non-owner occupied multifamily residential development." And then it continues from there. I've highlighted again that non-owner occupied portion of the current language. And over the years, this ordinance has been amended multiple times. And the language as it's currently found in our code, in my estimation, should have been deleted after the last amendment and just, I don't know if it fell through the cracks or what happened. But clearly, as you read through the entire ordinance, we... The cap and grade ordinance is not specific to just non-owner occupied. It doesn't differentiate between owner occupied and non-owner occupied. And so, the first amendment is just to strike that, get rid of that, and provide some clarity, not only to staff, but to developers who are reading this code. As I've indicated, I gave a summary to the city council last month on where our current numbers lie. This is just a quick reference, if you want to talk about it, if you have any questions, I'm not gonna go through these different numbers. But I found it interesting to take our current numbers and compare them to other cities along the Wasatch Front, perhaps cities closer to us. We've got Draper, Harriman, South Jordan listed in that second table. And you can see what their ratios are currently at right now. We've been able to verify these numbers with their GIS departments and the planning department. So, these are fairly accurate recent numbers that we've been able to pull from these different cities. So, that hopefully puts into context where we are, number one, where we are today, and secondly, where we're aiming with our cap and grade numbers and with this ratio. This map right here shows the current residential inventory. The light blue on the map are all the single-family residential subdivisions. And the red are current multifamily developments. That includes apartments and townhomes, condominiums, any attached units. And then the purple are the vested or the grandfather multifamily developments that are already in the pipeline and were already set in motion before the city initiated this cap and grade ordinance. And then the light brown and the darker variations of brown indicate the residential properties that are designated in our general plan. That includes everything from low-density up to high-density residential. And it gives you an idea, obviously, even before looking at this map, we recognize the fact that the majority of the rest of the growth in West Jordan is going to occur out west. And you can see that clearly on the map. So, one of the unintended consequences that we've seen as staff is the potential for developments to come in that would not be to high standard and the lack of ability the city has to require a higher standard of architecture and development. I showed this to you a couple of weeks ago in your pre-meeting, but I think it bodes well to show it to the public here. These are two developments in different communities, not in West Jordan. Both are alley-loaded projects and developments. The yellow are alleys, the white would be public roads. We're comparing as closely as we can apples to apples, similar-sized lots, similar-sized homes. And the one, the development on the left, did not have an architectural review or design review that they had to go through. And subsequently, if you were to visit this development in a fairly, at least a perceived affluent city, you'll notice that it really is a plain vanilla stucco box, not much to really get excited over. As opposed to that, this other development did have and does have high architectural requirements and standards that they had to meet in order to move forward. These two pictures illustrate the difference that can take place when developers are required to go through a design review and meet higher architectural standards. The value and the overall feel of the development on the right hand... Or on the left-hand side is a lot less than what you would find today in the development there on the right-hand side. What I'm getting at is, we want, as a city, to do our best to incentivize developers to go through a planned development, a master plan development, so that we do have the legal leverage to require a higher grade of architecture and development, amenities and open space and those things that really make a community a community instead of just a subdivision. So, as you read our cap and grade ordinance, here are the current exemptions for multifamily. Number one, residential housing developments in compliance with the general plan that are, number one, multifamily housing in a transit station overlay district. The second exception is senior housing for age 55 and older. Three, or C, multifamily housing for disabled persons. And D, low and moderate income housing owned by a nonprofit or local housing authority. These are current exceptions that the council has adopted, that if you were to come in with a development in one of our transit areas, the cap and grade ordinance would not apply and you could proceed and develop out normally. In order to incentivize developers to go through and actually build lasting, contributing portions of our community, we're proposing that we consider an additional exception. Multifamily housing as part of a master plan community that meets the following provisions: needs to be part of a master plan that has a minimum of 75 acres and is in either our PC, which is a planned community, or PRD, which is planned residential development zones. Second point that they have to meet in order to be exempt: two-family and multifamily housing not exempt by the provisions listed in Parts A through D, which I already read, shall comprise no greater than 17% of the total number of dwelling units in the approved master developed plan. Now, why 17%? Well, I chose that 17% because that's already adopted in our general plan. And in order to consider any amendments to the city code, the zoning ordinance specifically, the first finding is that, is this in compliance with the general plan? So, that's why I picked the number 17 there. And then the last point: two-family and multifamily housing units not exempt by the provisions listed in Parts A through D above shall be individually owned as either condominiums or townhomes. And this would require these multifamily developments to go through a subdivision plating process. Once that is done and complete, it's out of the city's hands. And we recognize the fact that investment companies may have the ability to come in and buy up blocks of condos or townhomes, whatever it may be, and rent those out. It's going to be very difficult to institute any additional provisions. It would be a very challenging endeavor to manage that. So, we feel that as we require this plating process, we can make sure that the common space, the open space required in the PC and PRD, which by the way is 15% minimum, should be maintained in common. And in the pre-meeting, it was brought up that the management of that common area is really going to drive whether or not this is going to be a good community or not. That's something challenging to administer, but I'd be happy to entertain any recommendations. And lastly, I guess, to these exemptions or proposed exemptions, as we review these proposed developments and take them through our design review committee process, we have the opportunity to require high-grade architecture, a higher level of amenity packages and so forth, which will in turn drive that cost, purchase price up, which hopefully in turn will reduce the number, the amount of turnover and create some good longevity in these developments. Again, the aim of this is to incentivize the PC and PRD and create community rather than fragmented little subdivisions. We've got a lot of potential out west. Even here on the east side, we have some potential, but for the most part, out west, we have these big tracts of land. And it would be a shame to really see it carved up into small little pods that don't have interconnectivity and don't have a real community feel. And so, that's why we as staff are proposing this and be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? Mr. Green?
Just based on numbers, and I know that the 17% is tied to the master plan, would 17% of a development like the one that we saw here a couple of weeks ago with the one out on 78 and 56? Would 17% of that property going to multifamily, would that incentivize a developer enough to change the development from that kind, from the zone, you know, R110, R15, what we've got out there? Is that enough to incentivize a developer to go to a PRD, PRC?
I don't know. That's a great question. That would all depend on a lot of variables, asking price of the property, the amount of acreage that they're developing. There's a lot of variables, but it's a starting point. And if it doesn't work, we always have that opportunity to come back and see if a different number would make sense. If that were to happen, my recommendation to the city council would be to look at changing the numbers in the general plan. Because honestly, they should be... There's no requirement for them to be in lockstep, but they should be respectful of one another.
Well, it doesn't make sense to have the... From my mind, it doesn't make sense to have the general plan say 8317 and the cap and grades got 77 and 23.
Right.
You know, I...
And what does that do to the overall picture as far as being, having another developer be able to come in at the same time and not exceed the 13% or 82 with 17? Because you have more... If you had three... Because you're at 77 and 23 in a... In one development, how many units does that reflect in the overall and does that...
That's a good point, Commissioner Hager. Even though we have these exemptions listed in our cap and grade, the numbers of our transit developments and so forth, they count towards the overall percentage. And as I shared with you two weeks ago and to the city council last month, based on where we are right now and the end goal listed in the cap and grade, we're looking at about 50 years, five-zero, before we can balance things out. And that's okay. Development takes time. But if we were to approve this, it may add a couple more years to whether or not somebody can come in, if that's your...
I think that was what the question was.
So, if I read the exemptions right, and I'm just... To try to figure out incentivizing here, if we had a development on a 75-acre piece of land and somebody wanted to put 17% of the property in as multifamily, they could still designate and create a section of that development or buildings or something specifically for senior housing in that development or multifamily for disabled that would still be exempt, which would actually drive the number of multifamily units in that development a little bit higher? Is that the... Would you read that the same way?
Yes.
Okay.
Any questions for staff? Hearing none, we will open this up to the public. If there's anybody who would like to comment on this item, I would invite you up. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back for further discussion. Commissioner Hager?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, first of all, I just want to thank staff, you know, always a professional presentation, always well researched. And I'm grateful that this honors the work of the general plan committee and the residents' input. And as was just mentioned by Commissioner Green, that was a question that I had, that really, if we were to water it down a bit and take the lower, well, I guess you could say the lower percentage of... Well, the percentages that favor multifamily, it actually does get higher because of the exemptions. And so, I'd rather defer to the percentages from the general plan committee. So, that's what I would be in favor of, because again, the numbers are going to exceed that percentage anyway with the exemptions. There's always exceptions to the rule. So, if we have exemptions plus a higher percentage, to me, this gets too unbalanced in favor of multifamily.
Commissioner Hanson?
Thank you. I believe in the exemptions A through D, actually, or state law, that we do have to abide by. Is that correct, Scott?
Well, the A is not. That's a transit station overlay. Senior housing, seniors are protected class, maybe Mr. Thorpe could chime in on that. And then disabled, obviously, it's a federally protected class. Low and moderate income, again, we're dealing with protected entity.
Yes, those are all either covered by state laws or as a protected class, or they're very strongly encouraged by the general plan.
Thank you. As a former member of the council, I know that developers in large do not like this, preventing them from doing a high-density development. But I feel that we also are answerable to our constituents. And the constituents are very, very, very much against high-density. I got call after call after call. We've got people here at every meeting against it. So, are we more answerable to our constituents or to our developments?
Commissioner Green?
There's... I actually have two slight problems with the ordinance as written. Personally, I'd like to scratch just the PRD section and make the PC, just from my perspective. I think PC's got a better way of dealing with PR. The PRD part of it requires one architectural theme. I think that's going to be, personally, I think that's going to be a boring neighborhood if you've got 75 acres of the same architectural theme throughout the PRD that the PRD ordinance requires. And maybe we need to address that. The other... And I like the idea of a PC there. If we're looking at the one development that you showed us on the screen, you know, we know where that's at. And when you include the mix that they have of mixed uses with, you know, we'll say it's Daybreak, you know, Sotero and the different things that Daybreak has out there, it seems to me the PC zone would be more appropriate for this kind of development. And then the last one, if we do do this development, I think we've got to fix at least one line in the PRD development, or the PRD, PRC. Number... This is, and this will be just a note that we may have to fix. And this is 135C-1C7. It specifically says that we encourage a broad range of housing types, including owner and renter occupied units. So, if we throw this and say it's got to be individually owned condos or townhomes, that's direct conflict with that particular thing. So, we either need to go back through and strike out C7, or we just... We strike out E3 here, just knowing that, you know, if the part of the PRD, PRC is what we want, rental units, that was the original intent of the PRD or PRC. So, I think we've got to fix either one or the other to make these consistent in, you know, when we do the overall intent and we have to do the finding of fact and everything. It's going to put us at odds with the two ordinances. And we, you know, I don't know which one we clean up, or both, you know. I mean, I like the idea. I understand where we're going with the single plat... With the single plats. I mean, I think that's a good idea. And if that's the case, we strike out C7 and work on that, or we strike out E3 tonight, one of the two. I don't know which ones... I don't know which one. In the city priority, I guess, my dilemma is in the city priority, which one is more effective for what we want to see in a PRD or PRC? The mix of, you know, the broad risk, mix of housing types, the owners, the renters, all of those kinds of things? Or are we looking for single-family homes across the board? And I think that's the dilemma we have with the public policy issue that we have tonight. And by the way, you guys working on your citizenship merit badge tonight, welcome.
Commissioner Hager? Commissioner Hager?
As far as, as, as far as having the seventeen and, or seventy-seven and twenty-three, what's to prevent a developer from coming in and exempting and using that twenty-three percent to do a senior housing and then an additional twenty? They come in with senior housing, which is exempt, and that's rental, okay? Would, what's to prevent them from also doing an additional seventeen percent? Or the seventeen percent of rentals and then decide they want to put in the senior housing? Does that, how does that affect it? Is that an unforeseen consequence that we...
No, I think Commissioner Green brought that up. It, they, a developer could very well come in and, and put in a, a bunch of senior housing, which in terms of this cap and grade ordinance would not register, just their example. They could then go ahead and, and put in seventeen percent of their development in, in two or multifamily housing, as long as it's individually owned, there's, there's nothing that would prevent them from doing that at this point.
Then you end up with thirty-four percent rentals.
Well, you'd end up with whatever percent the senior housing was.
Yes, okay, that, that would be a variable, it could be...
Seventeen percent, if it's not exempt, would have to be either a condo or a townhome. So...
Commissioner Soski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One thing that I want to bring up is that I, I think we're kind of, we kind of have a fear that multifamily, maybe it's a prejudice in a way that multifamily is bad and that it will bring in, you know, rental properties and, and transitory, you know, individuals that aren't going to stay and aren't going to make the area beautiful. But I think we have a lot of single-family construction that falls right into that same motif, if you will. And, and the thing is, we're talking about limitations. The general plan has areas that are designed and zoned for this specific use. We're planning on building it that way. The thing that I like about the PC or the PRD is it gives us a lot more hands-on control of what actually goes into those areas. You know, as far as like, you know, we, we have, excuse me, the, the thing is, we can't control rental companies from buying. We can't control that anymore in multifamily than we can control that in single-family homes. So, I, I think, in my opinion, the larger goal here is to come up with some kind of like this, where we have a lot more control over what gets developed. Because the reality is, we're still going to have to develop multifamily homes. We have high-density that's zoned. We have all this that's got to go into the city somewhere. So, so in a sense, I mean, we can't really say we're going to do single-family across the board. As was mentioned earlier, we have a responsibility to our constituency. Some of our constituency does want multifamily homes. They want a, an area that's a nice home, that's affordable, that they don't have to worry about, you know, landscaping and stuff. It is something that some people want, as has been proved in areas like Daybreak. I think my opinion is that, that the most important thing is that we, we as a planning commission and as a city have as much control over what that looks like and, and how it will be utilized in the future by controlling the architecture. And I think that this covers that.
Commissioner Green?
See, when, when you were talking, I, I think there's, there's a, that, I'll have a couple of points here, but there's a, there's a couple of things. I think there's, there's a misperse, people tie high density to multifamily. And I think that those two, those two are not necessarily the, necessarily the same. I mean, you can have, you can, I mean, you can have fairly low, you can have low-density multifamily development. I mean, you could put, you could put twenty units in a, in a, in a three-story apartment complex on a twenty, on a twenty-acre piece of property and you're still only one unit per acre, but it's a high-density building. So, at the end of the day, I'm not sure that it's really as much about multifamily, single-family as the perception of high density. From the way I read this ordinance and the way the PRD and PC are set up, and Scott, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we still have to deal with an appropriate density. I mean, if, if the density, if, if we chose to continue with PRD, PRD's got multiple densities. You know, it's got that three to five, five to seven. And the density, even if we put multifamily units on the, on a development, wouldn't change the density. It would just allow the developer to put more space. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, we're not...
In addition, oh, one point of clarification, though. In regard to, to density, for example, in the, you mentioned the PRD has the varying levels. PC, we, we defer to the underlying general plan land use, the future land use map. And so, that is also a guiding, driving document that we would refer to for density.
And see, that's, that's why I like the PC better, just because it ties better to the underlying use of the land use map, along with it's got some commercial and some mix in there. That's why I like PC better. But the PRD could work because it's got the, it's got the, you know, it's got the density and the density buy-ups. And the density buy-ups are some of the same things that we did with that Highlands project not too long ago, and they did a pretty good job of the, the density buy-up. So, to get to the maximum side of the, of the density, I, so I, I think in the end, I, like I said, I, I think in the end, I think this is actually a, a decent ordinance that we, we need to look at adopting and think that, you know, if, if we did developments and we go eighty-three seventeen or, or something in that effect, we're not changing, you know, I don't think we're going to change the overall master plan that much. I really don't, you know, when we talk, because I mean, it's consistent with the master plan. We might be a little bit behind in certain areas, but I think in the end of the day, we need to have, and we talked about that one with the, two weeks ago on that other development, I, I think we need to have, instead of the, lack of a better term, urban sprawl, it's just a bunch of houses thrown out there, we need to have developments and projects that we can be more, you know, that people will want to live in West Jordan City as opposed to coming here for their first house and then bailing to our neighbors to the south or farther south because they think that that's, West Jordan's not a destination place. And I think if we, we take the properties that we have and can encourage people to do mixed-use developments, I think the west side of the city's going to be a whole lot better off than, than, than some of the other areas in the city that we didn't do this kind of a plan when we had a chance.
Commissioner back?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I think a lot of this was said. I, I guess just to summarize, I, I think we can keep paragraph C seven, as you mentioned, with maybe just some greater specificity. You're right, as Commissioner Soski and Commissioner Green mentioned, there is a place for rentals, certainly not against them. I guess I'd be more of the opinion to concur with Council, Councilmember Hanson, that probably at most, one in four residents would want multifamily. And if we can provide greater incentives to ensure this takes place, we mentioned, you know, going through a design review committee process. I, I think incentives are the, are the way to go in our early law. Everything else is basically said, so thank you.
Commissioner Hager?
I've heard concern about first-time homebuyers buying in West Jordan and playing to wherever. If, if we do this right, and, and we can have those people that start in the, in one of the rental units and it's a nice enough community, they'll move into a starter home within that community, that mixed-use community, and, and then they'll move from that starter home within blocks or whatever into a, a bigger home and keep them here in, in West Jordan, because that's, that, that seems to be the greatest concern, that we're just a stopover point. And I think this gives us some teeth to be able to do that. So, that's my opinion.
You have a comments? Scott?
Real quick, just to address some of the comments, in regard to the PC and the PRD zone, the, the current ordinances, yes, they do need to be updated. They, they need some, in, in some instances, greater specificity, in other cases, some more flexibility. But I, I don't feel that by adopting the, the code as it's currently written would necessarily, I, I see the conflict, Commissioner Green. But that reference is sort of a purpose and intent section. And so, in my estimation, this would hold more gravity i- if we were to have it challenged. I, I hope that we will, if, if this goes forward, if this doesn't go forward, I hope to get to the PC and the PRD ordinance this year to, to correct some of the, the challenges or the, the gray areas that need to be clarified. So, I just wanted to make that point that these two specific zoning districts are on our radar and we will be addressing those.
Commissioner Green?
Well, I, I agree with you. I, I just, when we, when we've looked at the, you know, some of the staff reports that list out, you know, does, the criteria, and we look at, and, and a lot of the staff reports have listed out all of those items, and sometimes the, the staff report stretches stuff to meet that intent. You know what I mean? And, and so, if, if we go forward with this kind of an ordinance, I think what we need to do is, one, you're right, I think we need to look at the PC and the PRD, but what we, what we may not want to do is, is, it, it may be easier, and this is just something to think about as we look at this, is to say, does the, when we have to do the finding of fact to go to the PRD and PRC, instead of trying to pigeonhole all the things that the, the development does to those items that are listed in the intent of the PRD/PC zone in thirteen-five C one, it, it might be better just to say, does this meet the overall intent of the PC/PRD zone and not worry about the specifics? Does that make sense?
So...
And I, I think that instead of, and, and maybe that'll be more helpful to the staff, is to say, instead of pigeonholing things into little subsections, can we, and it may be something that we can look at here and, here in, in the upcoming weeks as well, is does the development meet the overall intent of the PC/PRD zone? And if so, how does it do that? And it meets the overall intent? If we find that it meets the overall intent, then we're okay and we don't have to play the, play the, for lack of a better term, the smoke and mirrors game. Does that make sense?
I think so. Especially in regard to the, the, the view of fifty-six hundred was that you just reviewed with all of those very specific buy-ups, where you can have, there's a lot of opportunity for interpretation or unique math, for lack of a better term. And, and so, yeah, I, I understand.
Commissioner Soski?
Well, based on the findings set forth in the staff report and upon evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission forward a positive recommendation to the city council for the proposed tax amendment to Title XIII as addressed in this report.
Second?
Motion by Commissioner Soski, second by Commissioner Hanson. Any discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. That concludes our agenda tonight. Anything else?
Oh, I did have one question I was going to bring up, Dan, in the, in the pre-meeting, and I forgot. Councilman McConaughey suggested, you know, that I, I sent out everybody a survey on the law art, and those that have filled it out, I appreciate it, and the rest of you, I hope I see your response.
Coming, coming.
But Commissioner, or Councilman McConaughey suggested we post that on a Facebook page, like Friends of West Jordan. Does anybody have any issues? Is there any problem with doing that at all? Okay. I'll, I'll go out and find the page and post it, see if we can get some community feedback as well then.
Got more public info we can get, better we can serve the public.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I did it properly.
I'd be a little more candid on Facebook if you're lying, I don't...
Motion adjourned. A motion adjourned by Commissioner Soski. Any opposition to that? We stand adjourned until March first.